All right, we have returned to open session. At this time, is there any public comment?
There is none.
All right, then, are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
No.
If not, that takes us to the superintendent report.
All right, and I am excited to introduce Ms. Hefner, the principal at Hollywood School, and I believe along with Ellie Veleza, the art teacher from Hollywood School, that are going to share with us a little bit about some students that are here to talk with you.
First of all, I want to say thank you for granting my leave with my needs and interim and all of that, so they work. I go up and downstairs, I rode my bike, I turned over my whole garden, I was like, it's like the old Kim. It's so wonderful.
You can play kickball.
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna play kickball against the fifth grade. But when I thought of a group to represent Hollywood and to share with you, I immediately came to mind the Art Club, and on top of that, actually, the Art Program. I have just been amazed by the growth in our Art Program since Ms. Veleza has joined our staff. She begins with them, she is lucky to have the kids from kindergarten all the way through fifth grade, and she's developed a continuum of learning that is just so beautiful, and they become more and more independent. It works on basic skills in the beginning, and in the last couple of years, she's added an Art Club, which is just like the coup d'etat of the program. So I will let Ms. Veleza share with you, and some of the fifth graders share with you as well, about Hollywood's Art Program, including the Art Club. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. As she said, my name is Ellie Veleza. I am the art teacher both for Blythe Park and Hollywood Elementary School. I'm honored to be here tonight. We're going to be talking a little bit about our Art Program and our Art Club, of course. Art Club is dedicated to the fifth grade students who would like to pursue and create more than may be allowed within our short 50-minute weekly timeframe. And our philosophy in the Art Room at Hollywood, and both Blythe Park also, is that the students are the driving force behind the art, and the teacher is more of a guide. This follows along with Teaching for Artistic Behavior, which is a pedagogy used all throughout the nation that essentially allows students to choose what and how they're creating in the Art Room. And the philosophy is kind of introduced starting in second grade with the hopes that by fifth grade, the students are in charge of most aspects of their art experience. Art Club is an extension of that. We have students who choose to draw, paint, weave, sew, sculpt, and the biggest highlight is definitely our ceramics, which is a favorite amongst the students. Our kiln runs usually two to three times a week with about 40 pieces per firing, and the kiln services not only Hollywood, but also our Blythe Park students, and this year also Central students. So I have some wonderful fifth graders here who would like to share some of their art that they've created over the past couple months and year. Do you guys want to come up? Who was Willow first? Want to come up, Willow?
Good evening. My name is Will Eddy. I am a member of the Hollywood Art Club. I enjoy Art Club because I have always liked art and love making stuff out of clay. And tonight I have brought my dog sculpture project that I created with kiln clay that I made for my mom. This is the sculpture. I also brought this book that I made for my dad out of tape, paper, and coloring materials to make him a series of books for Christmas. This is the cover of it. I also love Art Club because I love my teacher, Ms. Veleza. She teaches me a lot about art, and she's so nice. She inspires me a lot.
Thank you, Willow.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Eden with us, and she's got a wonderful coral project that she's gonna share.
Good evening. My name is Eden Warman, and I am a member of Hollywood Art Club. I enjoy Art Club because it gives us more time to work on projects and finish them. And this one's my coral reef, and it's based off a bunch of coral reefs I looked up.
Evie Gunn, would you like to come up? Evie's gonna share some of her favorite parts of Art Club with us.
Hi, my name is Evie Gunn. I'm a member of Art Club, and I love art because basically you can express all your feelings on just a blank piece of paper, and really, there's no limit to how much you can do. It also helps me like calm down, like when I'm in drama and stuff, I always do art, and art's just like, it's just, I love it, it's so beautiful, and it's one of my favorite things to do.
All right, Ms. Catalina.
Good evening. My name is Catalina Barsadi. I had Art Club with Ms. Veleza for an hour every Thursday after school for 10 weeks. About 14 fifth graders from my class participated. I did many projects, and tonight I have brought one of mine to show you. I brought my shark project that I made in Art Club. I decided to paint a big shark coming out of a wrecked ship. I painted, cut out, and drew the shark. We are going to show this project to everyone at Open House. Come by Hollywood to see our under-the-sea-themed artwork. My friend Mallory Fought was not able to make it tonight, so she wanted me to read her letter to you. I looked forward to Art Club every week, having the space, time, and freedom to create after school. It was awesome. One of my favorite things that I made at Art Club was a Pink Floyd "Dark Side of the Moon" clay. I could bring it, sure, I couldn't bring it, so here's a photo of it. Another thing I loved about Art Club is that there is no right or wrong way to do things. It is just our own personal expressions. When I am making art, it makes me feel like I can do whatever I want to do. Thank you for your time listening to my letter. Sincerely, Mallory Fought, fifth grader, Hollywood School.
Thank you so much for having us.
Turn around. That way.
That way you captured it. Yes, yes. Great.
And I just want to share that it's not lost on any of us, that you guys provide the resources and the opportunities for these wonderful experiences for our children. Thank you so much for your support.
Kim, do they want to come back for some questions? They're back. A brief Q and A.
Yes, brief Q and A. Any questions?
I'll start. So I love seeing all these familiar Hollywood faces presenting, as well as in the audience, of course. And I just, you guys did an excellent job this evening presenting to the board. In case you were nervous, we couldn't feel it at all. I think it's really great that you spend your time after school, you know, just focusing a little bit more on this creative outlet, and I really appreciated learning why Art Club means so much to you all. It's really great to see. But my question, Huskies, is you shared maybe one of your most favorite pieces. What do you think was like one of the most challenging or most difficult art project you worked on during Art Club? And sometimes the most challenging winds up being your most favorite anyway, but curious, was there any that was challenging that you feel you grew? Yes, Evie.
The first time we were making like the clay, we had to use like the thing we had to get it, but I didn't understand.
Like the slipping and scoring to create attachments, that can be very difficult.
That was difficult.
Eden, go ahead.
I think I'm making out, I'm making it right now, I've been working on it for a very long time, and it's like a cat toy thing, and I was, I'm making out a cardboard, and I had to redo it a lot of it.
That shows perseverance, right? Willow.
I think the two hardest that I've made are probably the book and the dog, because it took, like the dog I made out of clay, and like the two I brought tonight, because, well, this one took a lot to like type and like fix and stuff, because there were some like mistakes that I made or something, so I would have to like remake or like redo some parts. And then the cover was pretty hard, because I had to do a couple layers to make it look like a real book cover. And then the dog took a lot, like took a couple, like maybe a month to make, because, well, I kind of had to get everything like, not like perfect, but like I tried to make it look as like good as possible, so it's kind of hard to get a lot of like details right.
Catalina.
Mine was probably my shark thing, because I had a, I had a sketch of the shark as a small on a piece of paper, and then I had to take two big pieces of paper and sort of cut it out perfectly in shape.
Enlarging it?
Yes.
Other questions?
Ms. Veleza, you're wonderful, this is a while ago, but my daughter had you at Central, and she was, we have a wonderful art teacher now too, but she was heartbroken to have you leave, but we're glad she's at Hollywood, and thank you so much for being so charismatic, and you can obviously tell that they love to create, so that's partly due to, a lot due to you, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm very honored to have this position.
And the kids are so well-spoken, so well-done, parents and kiddos.
Thank you.
And we go on with other parts of the board meeting now, and you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to leave. Now it gets boring.
You can say goodbye to that board.
Thank you all very much. Someone's eyeing. Always brings me to tears.
That's great. I have a couple other just superintendent, I guess, announcements, pieces. So if you recall, we also had a adopt a cow group of students come and share with us that they adopted a cow, renamed school, and they wanted to make sure that you had the follow-up on the status of eight of the cow.
Did it have a baby?
I didn't, I didn't read that part carefully.
Going to, I thought, yeah.
You read it much more carefully than I did.
I thought it was eight, his mom was pregnant.
That's what I thought too.
This cow's only six months old.
We might need to bring them back, we might have to bring them back. Clarify. All right, well, I thought we were providing the quick update, but now I see more questions than, uh.
I just sort of assumed it couldn't be this cow. I read that too.
Get back to us later in the meeting. The other thing, and just speaking of art, so the West Suburban Consortium for Academic Excellence hosts a really lovely art fair. Our art teachers are really all of the inspiration and the work behind it. So it's at Chaney Mansion on April 29th. Wanted to share that as an announcement with all of you. It is often a lovely day, and it's outdoors and indoors at Chaney Mansion. It's, if you're interested in seeing more art, and maybe some of the same art will be displayed. I'm not even sure how the art teachers choose the number of items to be there, but it's a multi-district art fair, really well-done, so I wanted to share that with you. How's your graduation is on the horizon. Wanted to make sure the Board of Education's informed about that. That's on June 1st. And then, and maybe a couple more, you know, more serious notes, shield testing and classroom COVID notifications. So our public health emergency, COVID public health emergency is scheduled to end on May 11th, 2023. It's been over three long years, hard to believe, that we've been doing a number of safety mitigations related to COVID. So shield testing will end at the end of this school year. We still have about 100, 150 family staff combined that sign up for it. We probably get about 50 samples a week, so not everybody that gives consent does it every week, but that will go away even for those 50 people that participate in a more regular and ongoing basis. Also, the nurses are in the process of preparing communication to go out to all families and all staff, but they are looking at ending the COVID classroom notifications. You often still get a letter that says a child in your child's classroom was identified as having COVID, and we realize that we're probably one of the few schools that's still doing that, and it's really more and more just being treated like any other illness, and so that, those notifications, that process will end. And also, some of you had asked about a requirement around testing. There really isn't a requirement around testing. There's still, I think, a recommendation that comes from our nurses around, you know, if you have cold-type symptoms, COVID-like type symptoms, I think they prefer that you test. I know that with the end of the public health emergency will also be the end of free COVID tests at home. We still have a really good supply here at school, so certainly something our school nurses would share if families really needed it. But again, it's not a mandate, it's not a requirement, it's really a suggestion made by our nurses, so I wanted to share that.
All of that's going away now?
That's, the COVID notification will go away May 11th, so there'll be a communication that'll go out to all families from the health office prior to that.
So the shield screening stops May 11th?
The shield screening will stop at the end of the year, just because of the way the contract is set up with them.
Okay. But the letters and the tests and all that stuff cease when the emergency ward ceases?
Right, right. Pam and Nora, right, I might, we've talked about this a couple times, just want to confirm. Okay, great. And then, one other thing, I know you had all approved a while back, West 40 Communications, their kind of new communications department has created the board bios, they're working on our community report with us, and they had also done just an audit of our communication, so you have that there attached. It's fairly lengthy, I would say, through all of that, kind of the summary version is that there are a lot of really good things going on in District 96 in terms of how we're putting communication out to our families. They looked at communication that I do, but more importantly, really, communication that's coming from the building level, from the principals, and we know also coming from classroom teachers. I think the one recommendation that they have is that they, as they look at our website, there's probably more that we could be doing to really celebrate students, celebrate student stories. I look at, you know, how great this is when we have our Art Club come and talk, and how do we do more of that featuring students and the celebrations that relate to all the great things our students are doing? So continue to think about that. I know we kind of probably use social media to varying degrees from a school perspective, and sort of all of that relates to the same big idea of just sharing more about great District 96 stories. Any questions about that? I know that's a short summary on a much longer audit report.
I do have one question, which one thing I know we wanted to discuss was sort of kind of tackle, and I thought, correct me if I was wrong, but one of the things we wanted to tackle was sort of communication to non-parents, like people who don't have kids in the school district. I didn't see anything in here talking about that.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, and thank you for bringing that up. It's our, it's an ongoing challenge for us, and I think they kind of looked at our, they actually examined pieces of our communication already out there. Our community report is probably the one piece of communication that we very intentionally send to all District 96 mailing, you know, mailing addresses, so that takes in some of Brookfield, North Riverside, and Riverside altogether. You know, it's interesting, I feel like we put a good amount of effort into that. I never get any feedback, not that we ask for feedback, even when we've done our surveys, you know, we've, we've kind of for specific reasons provided those more just to District 96 families, so.
Right, I mean, I did, I mean, I did see that, did see that, but I guess the thing is, to me, there wasn't anything new, any other ways for us to reach non-families. I didn't, I guess I was just sort of a little disappointed. I mean, I like the suggestions that they had for the school, but I guess I was just a little disappointed that there wasn't something in there to, how do we do maybe a better job of reaching? Granted, you can bring, you can communicate all this stuff out, if people read it, it's a different story, but it's just, there was nothing new in here.
Yeah, and I, you know, I had wondered too, like, is there more around frequency or recommendations there?
They did suggest a mid-year update, but.
Yeah, yeah, and that would be community-wide.
That was specifically to the community stuff. I'd say look at what we can do to see what the village, get into the villages system as well, because they have that flyer that goes with the water bills.
And I think when we did our kindergarten survey, we asked, you know, what we did is we asked the village entities to promote the idea that the survey was out there to be taken. So yeah, we talked about the, the attachment that could go out with other mailings from the village, if there's something that feels more, and emergency is not the right word, because we have a way of doing emergency communication, but things that we really, it feels important or more urgent to get it communicated more widely. I think we have access, but I think it's always like, how much space do you need, when do you need it, and why? You know, so I know the village is also hired a part-time, Village of Riverside is hired a part-time communications person, who I think is doing more with their social media, more of their.
I was gonna suggest, look at, let's see what the village is doing to reach out to residents, because that's the same population that we're talking about. I mean, granted, add North Riverside in, but that would be where I'd like to start, because I'd rather piggyback onto what they do than try and create something new.
And Brookfield too.
Hollywood, yes.
Is there a way that we can recreate that for those populations not in our municipality since we bridge out? Was there any commentary about, like, it just, it just seems like it's generally difficult because we don't really have that contact information easily available, but was there anything from West 40 about other schools trying to, or being challenged with this or anything like that, or did, were they just, was it just more about what we're doing?
It was more, more came back that way, I could certainly, so we have some regular communicate, ongoing communication with them because they are in the process of doing these other projects with us. As a matter of fact, Kathy and I have a meeting with them tomorrow, so you could certainly ask if there's more add-ons or have they seen, I think, you know, for them, I think they're relatively new to the school scene, so I don't know that they had come with us, to us with a lot of context around, oh, I found that other districts do this very effectively with their villages, so.
Gotcha.
It's certainly something, an ongoing question, and certainly worth continuing to explore.
Yeah, okay.
So thanks for bringing that part up. And that's superintendent's report.
All right, thanks, Martha. All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Could the board secretary read the contents of tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Let's see. Here we go. All right. Tonight's consent agenda consists of meetings, minutes from previous meetings of March 1st, 2023 Committee the Whole, March 15th, 2023 Regular Business Meeting, and March 15th, 2023 Closed Session. The Personnel Report is presented in Board Book, Payables Pre-lists of March 31st, 2023, April 19th, 2023, Ladsy Classroom Lease 20, for the 23-24 school year, and a Professional Learning Proposal from Systemic Educational Equity.
All right. Are there any items anyone would like to pull out for further discussion?
I need to pull out just a brief comment, and that is wholeheartedly supporting the Ladsy lease and having them on our campus, because those are our students. And I, we've heard commentary in the past about why we do this, and I'm very disappointed in that commentary, and I, having Ladsy here and in a classroom is a good thing. That's it.
All right, duly noted. Thanks, Joel.
And I wish we could do more, Joel. We've just been hearing how Ladsy is tight, right? I'm looking at Pam and Nora, who just reminded us the other day, that they're begging for classroom spaces in the other public school district, so.
Really?
The programs are growing, other districts, I think, are also growing in their enrollment, so they're having fewer spaces to share. So yeah, I'm always very glad that we're able to maintain a space, and I wish we had more. We don't, so, yeah.
All right. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve tonight's consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Merhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
All right, next up are administration contracts. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the administrators' contracts as presented?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Call out that we went with an across-the-board 4% increase with admin contracts this year just due to all the hard work that's been going in with the strategic plan and a lot of the just significant movement among all the different goals that are out there, really a lot of strong clarity of what we need to do and what we have done well and where we still have to go, and that's been a really heavy lift in addition to everything else that these administrators have to do with their teams and in their buildings and standard day job stuff, just kind of adding on to that. But it's, I think it's, it was done because of the alignment of our strategic plan and the whole, what do they call it, living the plan piece that we came out of it, making sure we don't just put it on the shelf and come back in five years and go, how did we do? So I think we collectively have agreed that the admin team has done an amazing job of just really bringing that plan to life and instilling it within all the different buildings and all the different parts of the organization. So we went with a slightly higher increase than we typically do year-over-year because of all that work they've been doing.
Definitely a good call-out. Any further discussion?
No, I'm just, I'm just ecstatic that we've had such wonderful administrators all these years, and the fact that they have remained and we have such consistency is really good for our kids, so thanks to everybody, because that's so important. You know what happens when we were first on, there's just flux, and when you get changes in buildings, it really does affect the kids, so.
Consistency is definitely a very good thing.
We're thankful, yeah, we're so thankful for them doing what they do, so.
I agree completely. Anything else? Are we ready to vote? All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Merhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Yeah, feel free to high-five back there.
Well, you had to be here to get us.
Must be present to win. All right. Next item is superintendent's salary recommendation. Is the board, excuse me, is there a motion that the Board of Education approve a 4% merit increase aligned with the merit we recently approved for all other district administrators?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Ditto what I said.
Kind of like the all-other administrators, yes. Yes.
Thank you for all your work.
Definitely.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Are we ready to vote? Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Merhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Let's see, next up Riverside Education Council, anything tonight? No? Then next, that brings us to board member comments.
I have one comment to make today, just that this might be our first meeting we've had that I can remember. We haven't talked about our Central Howser Campus Plan, so I'm gonna insert here. The village is, the village continued our application, or whatever we want to call it, our request for variances until their meeting tomorrow for additional feedback that they weren't able to get at that last meeting. So just mainly a reminder, and also just, I've been trying to help out with Joel here, with him being a commissioner and having to recuse himself and kind of in a tight spot with being able to do much with this. I had gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting back on March 15th, and I'm planning on going tomorrow. I wasn't sure if any of you were available to attend or not, but really just want to go and show my personal support for this project alongside, I think, a couple other, I think you said, we got a couple people from the district going just to be prepared to answer any additional education or other questions that the village board might have. So that's really it, just trying to, each, each PCC meeting, I just made sure to con- to comment that I was going and just trying to be transparent with everybody of my participation in that, so I don't know if anybody else was going to try to attend or not, but would love to have you there just for visual support if you're able to attend.
I was planning to be there as well.
Okay. Cool.
Support and comments at the village board level are appropriate.
Uh, yeah. Board member time on that is definitely appreciated. Uh, next up, that brings us to committee reports. Uh, first up is Policy Committee.
I don't have anything for tonight under policy. I know I mentioned at the last meeting that, uh, press issue 111 came out, that's due back July 31st. The, um, webinar did take place. Unfortunately, I was unable to join last minute as I had to cover for a team member who was out sick. But I still, just from my read of it, they appear to be, um, kind of smaller updates in general, but I believe given that May Cal will be our, uh, reorganization meeting, we'll likely bring them for first read to the, uh, May regular business meeting. Um, and we'll figure out when we take, and possibly fraction at our June regular business meeting. I will not be in attendance at the June regular business meeting, um, but I feel I'd like to be here for the first read, obviously, so. Just plan of what we're going to do with 111.
So we're shifting our procedures just a little bit?
Yeah.
You just carry that wherever you go?
I do, yes.
One page a day.
I do carry my, um, wherever you go. It's hard for me to let go of them. At some point, I do recycle them, and I, but I, I like struggle to be like, when? That is, um, all I have tonight for Policy Committee.
All right. Thanks, Stephanie. All right. Uh, next then is Facilities.
Uh, Facilities has a meeting on May 2nd, and then the more important item is that village board discussion tomorrow. Wesley pretty much described it already. They will be deciding on those variance proposals, and then there's also the site plan review next Wednesday by Planning and Zoning, which has, um, they actually, for site plans, they do, Planning and Zoning does get to approve that. They do not need to have village board input. That's it.
And just for clarity on that, the site plan is basically just making sure we did everything according to code, right? Because the variance processes, we know we're not meeting code, and then the site plan is just the totality of all the stuff to make sure that we're, we are doing it appropriately.
Very much so. Site plan is much more invested in shapes of things and, um, essentially the drainage issues, the water and the impervious. That's where things, and Ryan and WT have spent a lot of time figuring that out and have figured out what needs to be done to meet the village requirements as well as the MWRD requirements, and so that's, that's where that is approved. There'll be questions on that. How, how are we doing this water management?
Yeah. All right. Thanks.
That's it.
Thanks, Joel. Uh, then next is Education Committee.
Well, it's, we didn't, we didn't really meet because we had a very extensive meeting, um, on the 5th, where we talked about one, two, and four of those goals, like, I, I have it here, like student growth and achievement, learning environment and culture, family community partnership, and also the professional learning proposal that you guys heard about. So it's, it's at the end of the year, so I'm not going to speak to the administrators, but it's kind of doing its thing, so. You know, IAR testing.
It wasn't intentional that we were going to do that full goal update, thinking it was the end of the year, but with May now being the reorganization and June is going to be a self-assessment, I'm glad we did it, because it was really kind of a, it was a comprehensive update.
Right. And I know they just did, um, IAR testing recently, so that's finished, and it seems like they're getting back to their regular schedule, the kiddos, so that's all I have.
Yeah, no updates.
This education committee is signing out, so.
Yeah. That's right.
Peace out.
Just letting the teachers and the administrators do their thing.
All right. Thanks, Lynda and Sherry. This education, uh, committee report will be missed, definitely. Uh, next then is Personnel Committee.
Uh, I have no new updates. A lot of what I've been working on is year-end review, closeout, compensation stuff, which we have been discussing in closed session up to this point, so I don't really have much else to add at this point.
All right. Who else? Then next is Finance Committee.
Not much to add, just sort of, you know, on the new business, we got some, we're making some transfers, um, to various funds later. Uh, I know, uh, Jim has been working on, like, sort of doing the budget plans for, like, these projects, especially for the Central Hauser, um, campus, and I, I do want to sort of tack on to something like, to what Wesley said, that I do know the village board is, is talking tomorrow, but it, once, I do want to point out, though, that if it isn't approved tomorrow, that does throw into jeopardy the whole timeline for our projects and potentially costs, too. So we have to go back to the drawing board, we have to reevaluate the cost, and I'll look at everything again.
Duly noted. Thanks, David. All right, then that brings us to Old Business. First item under Old Business is Hauser start and end time as an action item. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the Hauser start and end times for the 2023, 2024 school year and into future years be modified to begin school at 8:20 AM and end at 3:25 PM?
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, this was discussed a while back. It basically, it switches everything, they're going to come to school 10 minutes earlier in the day. This will help with some other scheduling items at the end of the day.
Anything else? Are we ready to vote? All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Merhead?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes.
Okay, then next is the Salt Creek Athletic Conference, Conference Transportation Update.
So this one isn't exactly, it's not, there's not really an action item tied to this one. If you recall, it was really a year ago, we talked about the challenges with bus transportation. Actually, we've had challenges for years and years with getting to athletic events on time, finding a, a bus service that's able to do it, can do it on time, can do it for a reasonable cost also. And what we started doing was family car pools, and I know the board at that time had asked that we please revisit this regularly because I know you were, you know, the car pools work, but I know it's really probably not anyone's preference that we rely on families to make this happen. Um, so Jim, and Jim, do you want to come up to the microphone if there are particular questions? But, um, Jim has continued to talk with bus companies, get informal and formal quotes from bus companies. The memo there pretty well details it, that, um, really we have not found a bus company that's even willing to. So, um, bus companies, you know, there's been a real bus driver shortage that I think where they're contracted to work, they're plenty busy if there's even enough of them to go around, even, we know of school districts that have gone on special schedules, split schedules, et cetera, just to meet daily transportation requirements. They just don't seem available for transportation. Um, April and Chris have been really clear with us that the carpool works, that, um, families seem willing to do it, kids aren't being left out, it's a very organized process. She hears from families that they kind of like doing it, you know, it's a nice time to load up a group of kids in your car and hear what's going on in middle school, which sometimes you don't hear, um, as much as you might like, and, uh, kids are getting to their sporting events on time and getting back on time, so at a reasonable time, I should say. Maybe I just shared it all to him, I don't know, so.
Yeah, and, and there's other companies that I should talk to, I will. For the most part, the, the bus companies with their limited capacity are taking care of their customers that are everyday, um, customers, that's, uh, instead of looking for this kind of one-off. Uh, we get, we get our field trips covered, but, um, we haven't been able to get someone to commit to the sports.
It's the after-school activities that are the real issue?
Right. Uh, if they were in the evening, we'd probably be all right, but they're
Right.
Not done with their afternoon routes by the time we need them.
Yeah, you mentioned that, that the earliest one of the companies can come is 4:15.
Right.
I think I'd heard there was at least some concern that the district was doing this as a cost savings measure, and I understand that's not the case, but I don't know if there's anything more to be said on that, or?
Uh, no, I mean, we continue to have the money in the budget if we need it. The field trips are probably costing, um, 60% more than before, so kind of get spent on some of that, but, uh, otherwise, uh, if we could find a bus company, we would pay for it.
So it's just strictly about availability and scheduling and reliability?
Yeah, it's really not a cost issue, and, uh, we've offered to even reimburse parents their mileage, you know, parents aren't turning in for the mileage typically. I know these aren't far distances that we go to our sports conference, uh, but that's certainly something that would remain available to parents if they were interested in that. So again, and I know that would still be a lot less than what we pay for a bus, but, um, this really was not a cost issue at all, it was an availability issue. And then, again, um, what we're hearing from Hauser is it's working and people are pretty pleased, but I know from a, the sort of, you know, cost and responsibilities and something that I know the board feels is important to take on, I don't want to, I don't want to dismiss it or just forget that we, you would, you all had asked for some regular review of it.
Yeah. I don't, I don't personally like the liability behind it, but if we don't have any other options, the kids got to get, where they got to go.
Yeah, I was just going to add that I think we need to, instead of just saying, oh, it works, let's move on, like, at least keep trying as, as the environment changes a little bit. I think it's probably the better option if we could get a bus service, but, um, you know.
Like the whiskey, like, are there similar, um, districts to us that do not have a, you know, bus, um, service for the school day and then require it for the few? We don't even have that many after-school activities either that necessitate the bus, so I get that it's even a smaller population, but do we, and if so, like, what are they doing, or do their contracts just not fall through?
Um, it's a combination. Um, North Riverside has a specific agreement with Windy City Limos. I don't know if the company was, was based out of North Riverside, so we always joke, they get a special North Riverside deal that they did not offer in other districts. Um, and, um, Hillside just bought a bus. They bought their own bus, and we, we talked about that a little bit informally, was it at Facility Advisory or somewhere, I feel like we, we kind of inserted it in, and, um, I know the appetite around buying a bus, hiring our own bus drivers, putting them through the appropriate training, where to store the bus, there are a lot of issues to that one, um, but that is how one small district solved this problem, so. And then, um, for example, like Forest Parks and our sports conference, they have their own bus service, right? So it's the districts that have their own bus service are just in an altogether different category because those buses will, they're under the day pickup, they'll drop a group of kids to their sporting event, so it's, we're kind of stuck in that we don't have a special arrangement and we don't have our own bus service.
Why are the field trips costing 60% more?
The prices went up and they haven't come back down.
Labor shortages.
We just don't, people do not want fuel.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
So PTA covers the cost of, like, wherever they're going, but the district covers the cost of the bus?
Yeah, we're responsible for transportation.
Uh, for sports, but you're talking about, like, for a field trip.
Yeah, just mentioning why field trips went up 60%. I thought PTA covered, like, let's say you need, and, you know, you're going to go into a place like that, cost admission.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking about admission. I just, I kind of assumed you were talking about the bus transportation went up 60%.
But we covered.
And that is a cost that the district takes.
Yeah, the district takes that. We don't ask parents to pay for field trip buses.
Right.
We'll, we'll keep looking into it.
All right. Thanks, Jim. All right. Next up then is New Business. Uh, first item, David was mentioning fund transfer, transfers per financial projections.
Pretty self-explanatory, we're moving, uh, the funds for, like, from the education fund to the capital funds, and then we're making a $500,000 transfer from the, uh, working cash fund to the retirement social security fund. Jim, you have anything to add?
So the first one is what we had budgeted to cover, capital projects that we're all were aware of. The, uh, municipal retirement social security fund. When I first got here, it, we were in the habit of requesting a good $300,000 more than we needed in a year, so the fund balance had built up to, uh, almost two and a half years, which kind of leaves us open to a tax protest. And so then in 2019, when we did levy, we dropped that down significantly, so I, we couldn't transfer the money out, so the only way to get it down was to ask for less than you need in a year. So the last couple of levies, we've been doing that, with the goal of keeping the balance within one year's worth of, between, say, 50% and 100%. And it's gone a little bit low, 50%, and partly because when he's coming in a little slower, but also because trying to fine-tune it so that we don't have excess funds in there. And those funds have gone into education instead. So instead of, uh, taking a chance of going in the hole in that fund, I think this money that's sitting in work, uh, working cash that can't be spent out of there, I'd like to transfer 500,000 of it into the IMRF Social Security Fund as a buffer.
And then, so from what you just described, this'll just put us in, in kind of that sweet spot you want to be, and then we'll just continue funding as needed, and that was part of the audit thing about, I know I always hear, you got two, three, whatever many years in here, so this is, now we're just kind of back at even and we'll just continue forward.
Right. And, and the levy's done, so you do levy in December, the money doesn't come in, the tax bills don't go out for a while, then it takes a year and a half, so you're trying to time it, uh, well ahead. Maybe it's better to shoot closer to the 100%, just in case. Uh, better to be a little high than a little low on, on that number. But yeah, the, I want to get right to that, say 75% maybe.
Is any of this lower amount in the fund a result of the delayed tax bills last year? To some degree, since we were off by three months?
It's a factor just on the flow, but eventually we do get our tax money.
Right.
Even if someone pays back tax bills after they buy a place.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
These were the two transfers we talked about at the last meeting, too, so just making sure.
And so we'll have, uh, a, a vote next month at the business meeting, and then get it moved before the end of the year. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, and then, uh, next up is the 2023-2024 West Forty ALAP Advocate Proposal. Did I say that right, or is it?
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
So this is a new business item that I just wanted to bring to the board's attention. Um, there's, there's a lot of detail. This is, uh, if we were to move forward with this agreement, and it would be my recommendation that after considering it, we would move forward with this type of agreement. ALAP is Alternative Learning Opportunities Program. It's a program that's offered, um, to districts through West Forty, which is our regional office of education. This particular program is something that, um, we reached out to West Forty when our principals had just expressed some frustration around what to do with children with school refusal, chronic absenteeism. Um, sometimes we refer to it as truancy. I still think of truancy as the child who's just out wandering the street and nobody knows where they are, which really doesn't happen. It's really more about kids that, um, we do know that they're at home, that for whatever[1738.73] that for whatever reason they're struggling to come to school, or sometimes even in rare cases, families are supporting them to be absent from school. This is not an absence because of an illness. This isn't an absence even because of a family going away for a long weekend. These are really children that are demonstrating to us likely struggles in areas not just related to attendance, but also related to often social behavioral as well as academic challenges. So this is a program, this particular program through West 40 have come to learn is pretty well established in probably most of the West 40 area high school districts. So I know Riverside Brookfield High School has two what they call ALOP advocates, although I learned tonight that they do call it something different there. But it's a, it is a person, it is a staff person with often like a bachelor's level mental health training that really paid for the district in year one and then supported through, I can kind of share with you, I think some of it's in their kind of a unique formula through our evidence-based funding and attendance formulas where it becomes very minimal cost to the district in year two and years beyond. But it is a staff person, it's really a West 40 staff person, but they function, you know, Monday through Friday, full-time, as if they would be a Howzer staff person, somebody really to kind of add to the mental health team around supporting students. So they may help children that are not coming to school. They may do everything from going to get kids, but certainly getting on the phone or getting, you know, in contact with families to, again, try to find out what is that reason why a child isn't coming to school and what can they do to address that reason. So for example, sometimes if it's basic needs not being met, if it's food, if it's clothing, that kind of thing, they will help families directly with all of that. But they're also going to help kids get to school, come to school, stay in school, do their work when they are in school. They'll work directly with students in academic areas. So do small group supports if needed, one-on-one supports as needed. More and more, I'm hearing in our region that more and more middle schools are starting to add an ALOP staff person to their school. Again, I think it really started as a high school phenomenon. It really can be very much a middle school issue also. The program is designed, it's a statewide program, it's funded essentially through the State Board of Education in grades four through 12. So they're very strict about not starting with children below grade four. I will tell you, our elementary principals had a lot of interest as they heard about the level of supports, but I think, you know, my first recommendation would be that we consider this next year as a year one pilot at Howzer. We would, you know, certainly be paying close attention to it. They, what they don't want to do is they don't want to work in multiple schools. So they really want to get attached, get connected to the staff, the climate, the culture, the group of students that need their support. So this idea of elementary-wise, I could see how we might benefit from a shared person between the four elementaries, but that's not really a model that West 40 would prefer, like to engage in. I told them they should think about that. But anyway, so again, my recommendation would be that we consider this for Howzer for the coming school year. The way the cost structure works is we would pay essentially $75,000 in year one, but then in year two, our costs would go, and this sort of sounds too good to be true, about $30 a year. And it's because they use our evidence-based funding dollars linked to the attendance dollars that we receive for kids that they would be serving. So they would not serve more than a caseload of 32 students, that would be their maximum. We've done, Angela's worked with April and Chris around who are some of our at-risk students, and we could sort of quickly estimate that there's 20 to 25 students right now. If we were to have a person like this on our staff, that we would set up for supports and services with an ALOP advocate. So...
So that the evidence-based funding you referred to for these students that otherwise we wouldn't be receiving that?
They would take our evidence-based funding, which we get very little because we're a tier four school. So if there's 20 kids on their caseload, they essentially take those attendance dollars, which amounts to about a dollar per child, that they would then collect on our behalf. And that's really how West 40 sustains the program, is these children sort of show up now as West 40 caseload enrolled in the ALOP program, even though they aren't enrolled at a different physical place, they're enrolled in the program. And then therefore, the state sends that money to West 40 as opposed to District 96. But again, because we're high tier on the evidence-based funding, we're not losing a lot of money on that because we're not receiving a lot of money in the first place.
How was this advertised to us?
We actually went to West 40 because we were so frustrated about some truancy school refusal. We said, could somebody come talk to us? Like there has to be a better, you know, better rules, better supports. And we learned about this program. I said, we need to, you know, I mean, and so we went seeking out, I thought we were going to hear more about different rules, legislation, you know. Some counties have a much more punitive approach around children that don't come to school, families can be fined. Cook County doesn't have that kind of thing. And really kind of surprisingly, and you know, to our sort of great, sort of excitement, enthusiasm around all this, learned about this program. And then of solo learning is just sort of starting to roll out into middle school. So I think that's part of what, it's been in high schools for about the past 10 years.
You might not have the answer to this, but just wondering about, so if we're limiting it initially, piloting it just in Howzer and the junior high, for all the reasons that you stated, that there's a benefit, I would assume, and maybe Angela knows more on this, that high-risk students sometimes have, it's a family thing. So then there's high-risk siblings in the elementary level. So do they, you know, do they just not get anything? Or do we hope that by helping one, that the same follows, you know, the same is true for the younger sibling?
We did talk about that with them, and I, I think they would tell you that they are helping the family and that hopefully then sort of maybe secondarily, the younger children are getting help.
Gets to school as well.
Gets to school as well. And if they're not coming to school, and again, you hope these things are, but if they're not coming to school because there's not food in the house, right? You know, they're, they really are taken care of. And they talked a lot about really helping families who have some basic needs that need to be met. So you would hope, assume, believe, plan, right, that there's help to an entire family. The other thing I didn't mention is the ALOP advocates are 12-month employees and they don't work a teacher contractual day. So one of the other things that they talked about is they are going to go and help a family in the evening. They're going to go and, you know, connect with the family in the summer. They're going to maybe even help kids find some academic supports, or, you know, maybe it's helping them get to our summer school program. So that idea of them being sort of 12-month, I'll say around the clock, I don't know fully how around the clock, but they certainly talked about doing things early in the morning or into the evenings to, you know, kind of whatever it takes to support a child with the goal being to get a child successfully integrated to school.
This is much closer to the wraparound services that we've always been discussing.
It's very similar, and Patrick or I know could comment more on that. So we, through our LADZI, our special ed cooperative, we have a, something called RAP services, actually RAP worker. So usually a social worker, right? And they are doing many of the same things. It's, it's a little bit more one-on-one and sort of like belonging to the group, even though our RAP workers do an excellent job, they get very involved with our school staff as well. We felt a lot, as listening to it, it felt a lot like LADZI RAP. We contract LADZI RAP services based on a student in need, and then we pay essentially like a fee per student using that service. So this would be more, a bit more global, saying like, we would like this to be available to all of Howzer. Howzer then may say like, I want you to see these five kids this week, but it's going to be different five kids next week, or it's going to be 10 kids next week because we've added five more. Whereas LADZI RAP would be sort of a referral based on a specific student or a specific family. But yeah, it is, it's wraparound. It's that idea of like, how do you support some of our children with the greatest challenges and the greatest needs to be in school and to be successful once they are here?
And you said we would need one per school that's not really designed to...
Yeah, so they only go fourth through 12th grade, so fourth through eighth for us. And they, they do not right now in their sort of process look at, like if we said, hey, we could use one at Ames and one at Central, but we want to share one between Blath and Holly, which is often our formula, right? And I don't even know if we have the level of caseload yet. I think we really want to see sort of how they come in, how they really do the work. And talking to other superintendents that are already have, that already have the program placed in their middle schools have heard really good things. You know, high caliber staff, really doing good work, really making a difference for kids.
I mean, because fourth and fifth grade is, I think, all elementary schools, which if it's only two grades, is it just like the bigger schools that have more kids in fourth or fifth grade? It makes more sense. And because we have some smaller schools where there's only one or three sections, we don't, we're not going to have as many. And so is that kind of the struggle?
Yeah, and I think, I have not, I think they had one school where they're starting to do some work in an elementary school. So I think just like, you know, we kind of said, it seems like it really was almost like a high school phenomenon.
Yeah.
It's rolling down to middle schools.
Yeah.
Seems like there's a real fit and a real need to offer this program at Howzer. And then I think we watch it, we keep an eye on it, we really think about fourth and fifth graders district-wide.
Yeah.
And how that may
Yeah, I'm going too far.
Where this needs to evolve, yeah.
You did say this is just starting to roll out in junior highs, so they're probably not even thinking about grade school.
Yeah, they've thought about it a little, but I asked, I said, can you name some elementary school districts? And I think they named one in like the West 40 region.
Just out of curiosity, do we have a sense of how many kids are in the fourth and fifth grade or even grade school that are at risk?
How many? Angela, like I don't think we've, there's a, there's a way we use our power school system that we can look at at-risk factors and academic behavioral attendance and...
At the time, we broke it down to estimating about how many there were based off of the criteria of attendance rates in TSS. There was one or other, I can't count my head, but by the time we broke it down, we just looked at the whole group. We didn't break it down by grades, but that's something I can do if that is something the board would like to know by the time.
I was just wanting, I just wanted to get an idea of, I mean, if we're looking at like 20, 25 kids at the Howzer Junior High, based on, I mean, there doesn't seem, I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but that doesn't seem like I have a present. I just want to know grade school, what we'd be looking at. I mean, how many kids are, should we be concerned about?
In my head, I started to see how like if we could share among the four, that you start to see how there's a caseload that could emerge. But, and again, they're, I understand their rationale. They really want to get into the school, establish a relationship with the, with the staff, with the school community. And so they, they don't want to split their time. They just, that's really not their model for, for services right now. But I think it's something we can keep an eye on. I wonder if they'll start to hear because in our region, there are a lot of small elementary districts. We're not that unique around, you know, and fourth and fifth graders, you know, are still often a bit more under the control of their parents. You know, they're getting to school is, they do not present some of the same challenges in middle school or might, around getting to school.
I probably won't be here to vote for this, but I actually personally find this really intriguing, and I personally think it's awesome because having taught at a high school, we had children that, the habits were already very, very established. And the family's input into how school works was already established. And sometimes it would have been nice to get to that child when they were in junior high or a middle school or even the fourth and fifth grade. I just think when they're at risk and they have these attendance issues, it becomes so hard to undo that. And I really like this idea to, because you do get tracked in a high school into a academic track or a social track. And this, this could really change a child's perspective and their trajectory later. So that's, I think it's really cool.
It would just be one advocate for these 25 to 30, that would be a caseload.
Right. I think their maximum is 32 on a caseload.
Feels like a lot, but it does seem like one. I mean, especially if you're talking about like morning services, evening services, like, okay.
And probably how families, sometimes things go is there's a child who's maybe more, you hate to say it, like in crisis now, and some more time and effort may be devoted to that family or that small group of families, and maybe things get stabilized and efforts go toward another family.
Every day, all the time, yeah, okay.
Yeah. I like the idea too, that during the school day, they may do some academic supports and interventions with kids. I mean, because that's a lot of it too, right? Like kids who've just gotten very far behind for whatever reason, or feel that they're at risk of failure, feel like they can't kind of pull themselves out of that hole. So there's, there's a lot to this model that I think makes a lot of sense.
No, I work with parents that, the parents were working two jobs each. And so there was no time at night for them to help anybody with homework. And so there was no one for the child. They would go home and there'd be no one there. So if they had somebody to really be an assistant, that's really valuable. Because not all, not every child has somebody around, you know, so.
Idea that they're putting together.
We'll bring it as an action item next month.
So they're going to place it next year?
They're going to place it next year, right.
All right. Next item is public comment. All right. And that brings us to future meeting dates, May 3, 2023, biennial organizational meeting, 7 p.m. in the multipurpose room at Central School. This is a change. Previously, I think we were saying it was May 17. We are changing it to May 3 due to, I think, recent changes in the law on the number of days past the election. May 17 would be just outside of that allowable range. So we are moving it up to May 3. Then so May 17, 2023 is public hearing, regular business meeting, 7 p.m. in the Howzer Learning Resource Center. Board will enter into closed session at 6:15 p.m. if necessary, and return to open session at 7. June 6, the board's self-assessment, 6 p.m. in the library at Ames School. As a result of that, our June 7 meeting is canceled. June 21, 2023, regular business meeting, 7 p.m. in the Howzer Learning Resource Center. Board will enter into closed session at 6:15 p.m. if necessary, and return to open session at 7 p.m. And speaking of closed sessions, I believe our intention this evening, we were in a closed session before this meeting started at 6:15 p.m. as noted. We have additional items to discuss, however, we do not plan to have any action or votes after this closed session. All right, so let me go back up to the top to get the reasons. Sorry, I've got a lot of scrolling to do here. All right. So then is there a motion that the board enter closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity, enforced security procedures, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual threatened or reasonably potential danger? All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Merhead?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
And Mr. Hunt?
Hi. All right.